Good evening. I'd like to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the City Council for the City of Calistoga. It is 6:01 PM. City Clerk, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kraus.
Present.
Councilmember Lopez Ortega.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Vice Mayor Dunford.
Here.
And Mayor Canning.
Thank you, I'm here. If you haven't already done so, please silence your cellphones, and if you'll also please stand for a salute to the flag. At the conclusion of the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll maintain a moment of silence in memory of those that were killed in the shootings in Gilroy, El Paso, and Dayton.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for
We'll now move on to oral communication on consent items or non-agendized items. This time is set aside to receive comments from the public regarding matters on the consent calendar, or matters of municipal concern that are not on the agenda pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 54.3, also known as the Brown Act. However, the Council cannot consider any issues or take action on any request during this comment period. Speakers are encouraged to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes, so that all speakers have an opportunity to address the City Council. I do not have any speaker cards, but if there's anyone here wishing to address the Council under oral communication, please make your way to the left turn. All right, not seeing any, I will close oral communication, and I'll entertain a motion to adopt this evening's agenda as presented unless a modification is requested.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by the Vice Mayor, I have a second by Councilmember Kraus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. We'll move on to council requests and ideas for discussion. Councilmember Lopez Ortega.
I have nothing tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams.
So, last week, I attended the Watershed Information and Conservation Council in Napa. That's the county committee that monitors water. And I'll just summarize a little bit of the report. The water people down there are happy in general because the reservoirs are full after a lot of rain this year. They cautioned that we want to continue to think in terms of drought that's likely not to go away, even though for the moment, we're in good shape. They also reported on the groundwater situation, and groundwater sustainability, and they did submit a report to the state, but the state, they reported, didn't accept the report, and wanted some modifications, and so the county is reviewing its report, hoping to satisfy the state's requirements on that. And I did ask about the pipeline that brings water from Down Valley up to Calistoga, and about the vulnerability to disaster, disasters being in our minds these days, and they acknowledged that the pipeline is vulnerable to fire perhaps, or earthquake, or vandalism, or terrorism, although they noted that there are shut-offs also. So with that sense that the pipeline is vulnerable, it leads me to the second topic that's been on my mind, which is the disaster preparedness preparedness for our town. And I know we do have, at least I understand, we have a emergency disaster plan. There's, it's prompted by a workshop I went to a week or two ago about hardening houses, and that was down in Napa. And then the New York Times Magazine had a large article on the Paradise fire, and it's, you know, sobering, as we all know, and sad. So I'm wondering if we could look at, or have a review of our local disaster preparedness plan, and take a look at that, and see where it's strong, where it might need shoring up, and just to review that. Is that something that can be pulled together in the next meeting or so?
A review of the existing plan?
Mm-hmm.
So every five years, the county takes the lead on a disaster plan, and all of the agencies, with the exception of Napa, partner with them and piggyback on to what they do. So that plan is currently being developed, or revised, reviewed, and updated. There is supposed to be a meeting of all the representatives, I'd want to say, in two weeks from now or so, to look at that. So for us to bring anything forward at this point, I think, would be a little bit premature. We need to let that process play out, and then, once that happens, if we feel that there's a need to add some robustness to our local plan, then that would be the time to do that.
Is there a timeframe on their project, on their work on that? Is it something in a month they anticipate being finished, or three months?
It expired June 30th, so we're concerned about that because it potentially could affect our federal funding opportunities. We've been in direct communication with their emergency services coordinator about our concerns related to that, and they're moving as quickly as they can on it. There isn't a hard, fast day when it's supposed to be done. It's supposed to have been done, you know, a month and a half ago.
There, yeah, I was gonna say, there is currently, we're operating under the current preparedness plan, emergency preparedness plan, and the modification that's occurring now, or the review, they're paying special attention to, obviously, the situation of wildfires since 2017, and also, they're including a section on being prepared for PSPS, Public Safety Power Shutdowns, which we know are going to be more often.
Possible.
Or led to believe more often.
Right.
And also earthquakes, because we just had the Napa quake recently. So all, it's almost like a convergence of natural disasters came within that five-year window of the existing plan. So there's, as Mayor mentioned, they're paying special attention to those activities.
So is our plan, is that something that's online for the public to look at and review? Or who knows about it, or how would we know more about that?
I don't believe it's online. If it's not, we can put a link on there, so people can look at it. I'll verify that tomorrow.
It's a pretty, it's a pretty, pretty large document.
It's probably about this, it's about two inches thick.
Yeah, it's a big, it's a big project, and Gary and I were talking about that. There's a lot entailed to understand. I think they said in this Paradise article that, you know, their town's document was a couple inches thick, you know, and the town burned down anyway, so.
The plan doesn't keep the town from burning down. It just tells you where to, what to do when it starts burning down, so.
One of the things that we were very fortunate about in this county, after the first Napa earthquake, which goes back about 15 years, is that most of the city officials, fire chiefs, police chiefs, mayors, city managers, and some council people, all went back to Mount Weather in, it's in West Virginia or Maryland, it's right there on the border, to a special FEMA class on emergency operations centers. And looking at who's here right now, I'm the only one that was at that meeting from that long ago. So I would say that if we could ask the county to apply for that grant again, because it has been, I'm gonna guess 15 years ago, it was right after the first Napa earthquake that happened, that another group of people go on down there, because the experience that you get there isn't just from California, it's from all over the United States, and addresses all kinds of emergencies that could occur. So if we can get somebody to do that, at least get our hat and the ring there for some time in the future, I think it would be beneficial to the entire county.
And we don't want to, obviously, give the impression that there isn't anything. There is, it's a living, breathing document that we use. It was used during the October 2017 fire situation. What was not included in that plan, because it was never anticipated to be a problem, was the evacuation of an entire city. We knew what to do when the earth shakes, and how you recover after that, that's in the plan, so that is a new element in there. And then the added situation we have now in PSPS to be added. So it's certainly not that there isn't anything, and I know our public safety teams and city staff are all aware of what that is and how that works, and we use that when we're doing CERT training for certain neighborhoods. The...
CERT train, I don't know what that is.
CERT is the, stands for...
Citizens Emergency Response Team.
Response Team, thank you. So there's that, and then also, the emergency preparedness meeting that happened in Calistoga at the end of June was very well-attended, and that was cosponsored by the city and the county, and I think you have one of the documents there that shows you kind of hardening, and hardening of your property, and then also evacuation routes, and how you determine those, depending on the...
Is this the one?
That's the one, yeah. So that went out to every household in Calistoga.
Yep.
You can also order them, I think you can get them from CalFire. So these are, these are all things that continue to happen, it's certainly not a case where there's nothing, and we're waiting for a document to be typed out, type of thing.
So you'll keep us updated on the progress of that revision? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kraus.
I don't have anything.
Vice Mayor Dunford.
Nothing.
All right. I just came from the National Night Out, which is happening until 7 o'clock, started at 4 o'clock, over at Loguee Park, and that is a national program that we have participated in for a number of years in Calistoga. It's all of our public safety, our police, our fire, sheriffs, highway patrol, some other community service agencies, parking, I was going there, Parking Rack, Public Works, city staff, and it's geared toward kids, it's, there's games they play, there's stickers they get, but it's all about imparting some information on them, and on safety, and what to do in certain situations. So it's very well-attended, thanks to the Rotary for giving the free hot dogs and chips to all the kids, and I see Tim is in the back of the room, and Tim was there as well, and it was a little toasty back there, Tim, but that's okay. So that is a program we do every year, and it's a great family event, and that's in addition to the Safety Day that we do in the spring around bicycle safety, et cetera. So there's a lot of that that goes on as well, that we instill some of this information and some of these sensibilities into our kids at an early age. Mike, are you gonna cover NCFG, PNS, in your city manager's report? All right. Tentatively scheduled on both the Board of Supervisors' agenda on August 20th, and tentatively scheduled on our agenda on August 20th, in that evening, is the public hearing and review of the purchase and sale agreement between the City of Calistoga and the County of Napa for the acquisition of 34 acres of the Napa County Fairgrounds. As most of you know, we've been working on this for two and a half years, and it's been a process, and we think we're about to land this plane to at least have a finalized agreement between the county and the city that we can bring to the public with all of the terms and conditions, assuming both bodies, after hearing from the respective publics, agree, starting on the 21st of August, we go into 120-day due diligence to inspect the property, et cetera, and that, if that goes well, then the city will potentially own those 34 acres by the close of this year, or the very beginning of next year. And I know that's something everyone's been in mind, had in mind, and the easiest way to say which 34 acres we're getting is everything except the golf course. That's pretty much the border of what's out there. So look for that on...
Excuse me, and the house, the house is part of the golf course?
So the house, the house that's adjacent to the...
On Grant Street?
On Grant Street, that stays with the county. Yep, stays with the golf course, and the house that's on North Oak Street comes to the city. That's one adjacent to the RV park.
Yep, on Oak Street.
Yep. So look for that on August 20th, it'll be in the papers, barring any delays from our friends down 27 miles south of us. With that said, we'll move on to the city manager's report. Mike?
Just wanted to add, Mayor, tomorrow, Public Works is going to be removing two hazardous trees from the patio right back here, there's two walnut trees that are dead, and they'll be starting on that in the morning, so that entire area will probably be closed, and we'll probably also close the stairs coming up. So just a reminder to the public that that area will be off-limits tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to Proclamations, Presentations, and Awards. In the first presentation of Service Award to Fire Engineer Ryan Smithers for five years of service. Ryan, if you'll come to the podium while I read this out. City of Calistoga Certificate of Recognition, acknowledging the contributions made by Ryan Smithers, Fire Engineer, for his five years of service to the City of Calistoga, signed and sealed this 6th day of August 2019. Signed, Chris Canning, Mayor. Ryan, thank you very much for your service. I can't believe it's already been five years.
Neither.
Is that mustache five years old, or is that a little bit less than that?
No, it's a little bit more than that.
All right. You're welcome to say anything, otherwise you can just come get this. Thanks, Ryan. So if this photo ends up in the paper, Ryan has to buy all of his colleagues ice cream.
And pay for the paper.
So please, no paper.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much, Ryan.
Fine, good to see that mustache.
Thank you. At least one guy appreciates it.
I didn't say I didn't appreciate it. Ryan, thank you for your service.
That's very good.
All right, have a good night. Next, we have a presentation by the Housing Land Trust of Sonoma County. Who's presenting this? All right, welcome. Welcome back to Calistoga, I should say, you've been before.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Please share with us your name and the organization you represent.
Absolutely. Is this on? Yes, okay. Good evening, Mayor Canning, council members, staff, and members of the public. It's a pleasure to be here in Calistoga this evening. I'm gonna share a little bit about the work that we are doing at Housing Land Trust of Sonoma County. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, and I want to especially thank Zach Singer from the Planning Department for extending the invitation, along with City Manager Kern. We are working with all of the cities in Sonoma to create opportunities for workforce housing. And this is about housing, but it's really about the health in our community. So to explain how the model works, our focus is to house our workforce. We house a lot of teachers, educators, SSU university faculty and staff, our public responders, city personnel, and pretty much anybody that is actually the fabric of our community, and that are priced out of the private housing market. And so we have come up with a solution, that's okay, we've come up with a solution that actually ties the price of the house to the paycheck, because that is really the index that we need to be thinking about. It doesn't matter what the housing market is doing, or Wall Street, or what have you, the paychecks that we're talking about stay steady, no matter what's going on in the market. So the price of the home, as I mentioned, is tied to the paycheck, and it remains affordable in perpetuity. So our goal is to accomplish two things. One is to think about the community, and what we're doing in the community when we have assets such as land. Two, how do we recruit and retain our local workforce by using housing as that vehicle to recruit and retain? So we have professionals who get to a point where they want to stop renting and start owning, but they're priced out, so they leave. This mechanism allows an opportunity for someone to own a house, build equity, pay a price they can afford on their paycheck, but also sets the land underneath the home aside for the benefit of the public, and the land trust holds that land like you would hold a park, for the benefit of the public, for the public, in perpetuity. So no matter what happens to the property around that land, it's always set aside, so the house on top of it is gonna serve someone in a specific income level forever. As you can see, we have homes all throughout Sonoma County. We've served about 83, not about, we've served 83 families, and we have 49 under construction and another 50 or 60 in the pipeline. And the idea is really to have a one-time investment, and in some of our homes, we have actually our fourth family living there. This program is about subsidy retention, not subsidy recapture, and I can get into that offline, but the idea is to make a one-time investment that is recycled time and time and time again to the same income level, without having to put additional public or private funds in. So our partnership is as follows. We work with city staff. We are adjunct staff to the city. The city has housing goals, and we are here to help the city implement those goals. And in that capacity that we add to the city, we partner with the developer, along with the city. So we become part of the team for the developer. So when we're going through entitlements, the developer's gonna be here with their team, their landscape architect, et cetera, and the land trust will be on that team to speak on behalf of the project for the units that are supposed to be affordable, knowing that we're working directly with staff, and that we're making sure the obligations are being met by the developer. So we're lessening the burden of government by implementing your ordinance, and we're lessening the burden on the developer, and creating actually an incentive for them to want to participate in a program, because they don't have to go out and figure out how to qualify people, and fair housing, and all these things that can be a disincentive. So we wind up having, in a situation with inclusionary housing, for example, we wind up having communities that are actually economically diverse. So you do have people who are priced out, living within that community, along with market-rate homes, and I think that, as our mission says, really creates a healthy and vibrant community. So the process for the partners, if you were to have a developer come to the city, the developer would approach the city with a project. The city would direct that developer to talk to us about what your ordinance is, and to break it down. This is what it means. This is how many houses you would have to have at this AMI, and this AMI, and this is what the price is that that family would be able to pay, and help them work out their pro forma. We have all the documents that are standard that we use in all our cities, so I would work directly with your city attorney, and with the developer's attorney, to tailor the documents. So that's another burden that we don't have. We list out what the deal is gonna be, how many homes are gonna be affordable, the developer puts in an application, and again, we're part of the entitlement team, working with you, and the developer as a liaison. We qualify the buyers based on your criteria, what you determine the housing need is, that's who we qualify. We have our lender, our title company, it's soup to nuts. We are huge on stewardship. Our families are known to us, it's usually a one-year process, from the beginning to the time that the project is built, and that's optimistic, it's usually two, as you know, but we hope for less. And all the developer really has to do is know that they have to deliver X number of units at X price, and just build the unit, the same as to build the market ones. At the close of escrow, the parties gather, and this is what happens. The developer deeds the land underneath the house to the city. Now the city's got this public asset for a nanosecond, it's in the chain of title. That land is then deeded by the city to the trust, to hold for the public benefit. We then lease that land to the homeowners. The homeowners have exclusive rights to that property as if they had paid that $200,000, what-have-you price. But because the land is leased, that, and has been taken off the speculative market, it actually acts as a permanent subsidy in the deal. The homeowners have exclusive rights to the property, like ownership. 99 years renewable for a lease means forever. You can't say forever in legal terms, but you can say 99 years renewable. So really, we're talking about an economic mechanism to access land. The homeowner agrees to sell the home to the same income level, to keep the home affordable in perpetuity. It's a paid-forward model. You get to stop renting, start owning, have the quality of life, live within the community, continue to work on your career, and then you can take the equity from here and buy a market-rate house, and we haven't lost our workforce, and the next teacher, the next public safety officer is housed. The developer sells the house directly to the family with a simple 30-year fixed mortgage, no seconds, no thirds, no fourths, it's not complicated. It's a 30-year. The goal is to have the same experience as if they were buying a market-rate home, in that it's a 30-year fixed mortgage, they buy the house directly from the developer, and have that experience as they would if they were buying a market-rate home. This slide is in here because it's an often-asked question, what do we look for? Well, because you have a smaller mortgage, and the price is smaller than a market rate, doesn't mean that you don't have to qualify just the same. So you have to qualify. I will point out that cities require that the program is for first-time homebuyers, and you can have a preference, if the council so chooses, to say that you want people who live or work in Calistoga to have preference above anybody else who is equally qualified. So why do we keep the homes affordable for subs, how do we keep the homes affordable for subsequent buyers? The price of the home is tied to the paycheck, not the market. The index tied to resale is the area median income, that's a chart that comes out from HCD every year. In order to keep the homes affordable to future buyers, homeowners agree to sell their home for a limited price when they decide to move. The maximum price is calculated based on what was paid, plus the annual increase based on area median income. Great, what does that mean? This is an actual example. So if a family in 2006, a family of four at 100% median made $75,000 a year, and 10 years later, that AMI did go up to $82,400, the change in how much incomes have gone up is 9.72%. To apply that, if the initial family bought the house for $300,000, and if the change in median income is 9.72%, that translates into $29,000 more of buying power. So they can sell their house for $329,000, and the total equity is whatever the appreciation is in area median income, plus, remember, they haven't been writing a rent check, turning it into a paper airplane and flying out their window, they've got debt reduction, whatever they've paid off on their principal, and if they had any down payment, they would get that too, although down payment is not required, which also removes a huge barrier for our The focus is on stewardship. We've been here 16 years, we've had zero foreclosures, and during the Great Recession, as a matter of fact, we had an increase in resales, because our families were insulated from the market crashing, because they'd bought below market, and actually, they wound up selling their homes, and we always have a list of people that are qualified, and we actually wound up having resale after resale after resale, because the owners left and bought properties that had market correction, and on to their second home. The focus is on how many people we serve, not how many homes we have, because the idea, again, is to make that investment that we have set aside, apply to generation after generation after generation. So for us, for us serving our public, why does subsidy retention matter? This is about protecting the public investment. We're gonna, we do, with this model, eliminate the need for government and private subsidies in future years as units are resold. We're tying the subsidy to the unit, not the family. We're not saying, here's a silent second, and when you sell, I'll recapture it, and you can sell it at what the market will bear, and then we have to resubsidize, or it's a cold market, and so then we lose that, and the house, it's, all that complication is gone. You, we front-load the subsidy, write down the price once and for all, it's tied to the paycheck. We're maintaining income-targeted workforce housing stock, and we're creating community wealth, and personal wealth while maintaining future affordability. So what is the city accomplishing? You're creating community wealth by preserving land that will benefit the community in perpetuity. You're partnering with a nonprofit in HLT, Housing Land Trust, to steward a finite resource that serves as a permanent subsidy to individual families, generation after generation. You're making homeownership a reality for the workforce in our community. And through the land trust partnership, we are delivering stewardship to our families to ensure successful homeownership. We're in touch with our homeowners once a month, and we continue the counseling throughout ownership, and manage the resale. And we are strengthening the fabric of our community by providing our workforce a secure place to live. Thank you for your attention. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Deb, thank you very much. I know...
I know this has been a very successful program on the other side of the mountain. So you've been around sixteen years. And unfortunately, we have to ask this question whenever the subject of housing that's affordable or affordable housing or schemes to get to that. You've survived legal challenges
Absolutely.
From neighbors.
Yes, absolutely. In fact, the way that our marketing and outreach is done is directly to the employers. And so what we focus on is, who are we serving? And so we'll have our teacher come and speak, I'm having this experience. Or our pastor come and say, I can now live here, and this is what's happening. So really, I think the time that goes into stewarding, the process and the community is really important. We all are experiencing the fact that our children are priced out and that our teachers can't live around the corner and our first responders. And so I think it's really a matter of how the conversation is managed. And we have absolute support and believe no one is as surprised as I am. We're always ready.
And how have you worked around or worked with, excuse me, the work-location preference in terms of giving residency based on working inside of, let's say, this zip code?
So I think what I'm understanding is, how do we manage the preference?
Right.
Okay. So any preference that the council decides on has to be legally defendable. So we would talk to your attorney. I'm telling you from experience and talking to a lot of attorneys, including ours, which we have like four different attorneys depending on the topic, which is a good thing, is if it's legally defensible. So for example, in Padaluma, they actually wanted me to house the first responders in particular. And two things happened. One, their AMI only went up to, not only, but went up to a hundred, and we did the price point check. And actually, our first responders were earning above that. So they passed a resolution saying that they wanted us to go up to one-twenty. This was back in, I don't know, '07 or something. And that if there was an emergency, it's important to have our first responders here in order to serve the public in a more effective way and efficiently. So as long as it's legally defensible. What's not legally defensible is, Deb, I want you to qualify someone who has, you know, Earl Grey tea on Tuesday at 3:00 P.M. with a scone and raspberry jam. No. If there's a number attached, it's a bad idea. That's a rule of thumb.
Okay. Other council members' questions?
I do have probably a couple of questions. Let's say a family enters this agreement, and while ninety-nine years is a long time, can this property be inherited by future generations? And what happens at the end of ninety-nine years?
Yes, thank you so much. Because I actually was thinking, shall I say this or not? Yes. So that is also unique to this program, is the property can absolutely be inherited. The heir has to qualify, because again, we're balancing the community. And so if the heir does not qualify or does not agree to the terms, they just don't want to enter into this, then the land trust would find a qualified buyer. And the proceeds from the sale, all the equity would go to the heir. So one way or the other, we are truly offering an opportunity for people to create their wealth.
Okay.
And ninety-nine years renewable. So it's a lease that would renew at ninety-nine.
Okay. Next question.
Yes.
Because we have had, I believe the term that was used was inclusionary housing. And there was a few houses in my neighborhood that were that way. I think they've all been sold now. The last one was just a little while ago. There were restrictions on renting out the structure or perhaps even renting out a room or doing a bed and breakfast thing in there.
Absolutely.
So all of these.
Yes, this is not a money-making opportunity. This is your primary home, and we monitor and have several things in place that we do and report to the city, absolutely. And our homebuyer education is very intense, and the stewardship is very high-touch. So we don't build or develop so that really the focus of our staff, our organization, our board and mine is on making sure that the stewardship to you as a city, the developer, and the families is constant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone in the public, any questions?
I got one quick question.
Oh, sorry. Vice Mayor Dunsworth.
So what if somebody doesn't really take good care of the house, such as like, you know, re-roof it in twenty years or something? And let's just say the house starts falling apart.
Right, so this is
And then they want to sell it.
Sell it, right. So this is homeownership. It's an economic mechanism to access land and house. So what we have seen in the last sixteen years, and the homeowners that have been there now eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen years, is that actually the homes are very well-maintained and improved because no matter what you're, what we're seeing is that thirty-year fixed at what they were making is still a way better deal than whatever is out there. And so the improvements continue to happen. Number one. Number two, if we had a situation at some point where someone was not maintaining their home, then the proceeds to make that maintenance corrected would come out of the proceeds of the sale. And that is in the agreement.
Okay. Mr. Quast?
I think if the land trust owns the property, you have to agree with me to stay in terms of being a county and property manager, so they will keep you at a level of what this community is there rather than a whole city, so that that doesn't increase on you. And then are you also a Realtor and may have to sell it? If that's what you're asking.
Let me address those things. So, and I'm going to add one more thing, since you kind of went into the same thing. I want to add that we have two regulatory agreements with you, which is that there's an affordable housing agreement that puts us on the hook and a performance date of trust. So if that land isn't used the way it needs to be, it comes back to you. And so there's that safety net. And I think that's very, very important. I have confidence in our nonprofit, but this is really about the public. As far as the state, actually, I'm doing a lot of policy work, and we have passed 2818 for the county tax assessors to look at it that way. And we've had success in Sonoma County, and that would be a conversation that we would have. The fact that the homes are affordable in perpetuity really is a good case to be made, and so there's precedent for that. So we would address that. And then, oh, the Realtor, right.
And they have to sell, so they say that.
So what we, so what we do is, it's a three percent total cost, which is also in the agreement at resale. And what we do is, we partner with a local Realtor. And so we do all the qualifying, again, based on the city. And the Realtor handles the Realtor part for a percent and a half. So that's a total cost.
All right, anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
I mean, this is a very interesting tool. I know it's been very successful over in Sonoma County. And I call it a tool, it's an option, it's a mechanism.
Absolutely.
It's one of many things we're, ourselves and other communities are going to have to explore and have to explore as we continue down this worsening housing situation that we all have.
Right. And actually, this is a tool that the UCs have been using for a long time to recruit their faculty and staff. And ours is based on UC Irvine in particular. So, thank you.
I think this has one question.
Sure.
Can you talk a little bit about the transition from Sonoma County to Napa?
Sure. Sure. So last February, the Board of Directors decided that we have the green light from within the organization to actually come out and reach out to Napa and to expand and to provide those services in partnership with the cities in Napa. So we are talking to various cities in Napa to really bring the model here. And yes, of Sonoma County will come off the logo. It'll just be Housing Land Trust.
Well, you know, we're the easiest town in Napa County to work with, so you should just start here.
You know, I think we are. And again, thanks to Zach here, so.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the work you do.
Thank you very, very much.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have, thank you. Next up, we have a presentation of a city department. In this month, we have Public Works Department. Taking us through this will be none other than Derek Rayner. Derek, welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for having me tonight to give an overview of Public Works and what we've done over the last fiscal year of eighteen nineteen. It's been a busy year. We got a lot accomplished. And I'm just going to shoot through some slides pretty quickly, show a lot of pictures of kind of what we've done, and then talk about what we're going to accomplish in the next fiscal year. And then briefly cover the grants and kind of where we stand on those.
Thank you.
So the first picture here, we've got a Storm Rain Project, Grant Street, Phase Two, which was basically putting a couple large diameter pipelines underneath the racetrack to fix a big bottleneck, one of the worst bottlenecks we've had in our drainage system up in that watershed. So real happy to get that accomplished. It was Measure A, grant-funded, a hundred percent, so. Next slide here, Phase.
Derek, just for the help of others, that moves water from where to where?
Basically, from, the watershed is all, it starts, the upper watershed is like the Ode Hill Mine area, the top of the ridge there comes down more, and then it all comes down basically back behind, you know, up north of Grant, that whole watershed, parts of Michael. And then it comes down basically through the county fairgrounds and then out to the river, to the Napa River there.
And that traditionally has been a tough area for us in terms of flooding, et cetera, so.
Correct.
Just wanted to make sure people knew where that was. Thank you.
Sure. So Phase Water Tank, you're familiar with, the old tank on the left, the new one on the right, a big improvement for water quality. Another grant-funded project, two-point-four million, about one-point-eight in grant. And the city had to contribute twenty-five percent of the cost for this project. Road projects, Lake, we did between Washington up to Fairway. And we also, Lake Street included a new water line. We had a very old spiral welded water line that was giving us a lot of problems. And so it was very nice to get that replaced. And it was replaced with a little larger line to be able to circulate the water better in the community. Spring Street, upper-left hand-corner picture, that included all new utilities as well as services to all the residents out there. And the new street, of course. The wastewater plant, we did a grit removal project, and we cleaned out the aeration basins there in the upper-left corner. Quite a bit of sediment in there since we built the new improved wastewater plant in the early two thousands. And there was about a couple feet of sediment on the bottom that got cleaned out of there. The clarifier kind of in the middle picture is shown after it was cleaned out. And then the picture on the right is a pretty important one. We've struggled with cease and desist order requirements from the regional board for THMs on our effluent discharge from the wastewater plant. Yourselves approved a resolution to higher trussel technologies about a year ago, and they were the scientific experts to come in and look how to resolve that problem that we had. That cease and desist order actually originated, I think, back in 2010. So it's been around here for quite some time. They came up with a very innovative solution. And basically, what you're looking at is the green pipe there is where we inject ammonia, which creates chloramines, which is a real good disinfectant that mixes with chlorine. And then there's a mixer on the left, and that was put into our existing system. And it was about a thirty-thousand-dollar repair for a big problem. Technology-wise, I'm happy about this one. I was working on this since I got hired, so it's near and dear to me. But it wasn't full-time work on this, but it took quite a bit of staff time as well. We had, a lot of the Public Works staff went out, and they had a sheet for each manhole and inspected each one and gave condition and assessments and age and depths and everything. So it's all in this ArcGIS Esri version one system that we published. And it's got as-built and road conditions, PCIs, pretty helpful. The recycle water project, we had some aging pumps down there, and we had a failing lid on our wet well there, that big thick concrete circular piece below the motors that you see in that picture. So we replaced the top of that. We put in two new pumps. We reused the other pump that was still in good condition. We put in some new piping and some automated valving. And then community enhancement, we had the Way Sign Project, the Parklet and the dumpster enclosure, which I think turned out real well. Additional accomplishments, just touch on a couple of these. The Riverside Pond Project, the first one, that's a cease and desist order project that we are continuing to work on. We are scheduled by the end of the year to have fifty percent design plans completed. We will have, submit SEQA, and we will also submit all the applications for all the permits required. This is going to be shoring up the Napa Riverbank, building the new ponds, getting them up above the flood elevation and lining them, and then shoring up right next to our headworks on Simmons Creek. So it'll go back to FEMA and CalOES. They will do NEPA, which is the environmental part for the feds. And then it will come back. Hopefully, they will authorize us for the next phase, which would be to finish design and build the ponds. That can take some time, though. The Signal Design on Petrified Forest Road, we're scheduled to have that design completed by the end of the calendar year. We're going to have a community forum coming up. We had a field review meeting with Caltrans last month, so that project's moving forward. And then the last one I'll touch on is Kimball. We had a major rewiring project up there. It was pretty significant and a bit unforeseen, but we, the plant was offline for several months and was rewired and now is running. Pending projects, just touch on a couple. We've got the Palisades Lift Station improvements that are coming up, the geothermal meter installation, and getting the discharges measured by October 31st, 2019, another cease and desist order item. And then the AT&amp;T pathway, we're going to try and get that built this year and this next fiscal year. And then we're going to do a feasibility study on the two pedestrian bridge crossings over the Napa River and evaluate the Gold Crossing and the Oak Crossing and come up with a recommendation on what to do there. And then we've got quite a few street projects, Grant Street, Washington, Cedar, and also Lake from Grant up to the trail. We are getting a proposal on that design here shortly. We anticipate designs being done for all those projects probably in the winter time. And then, you know, potential to build those next summer. And with that, Grants, one last slide here. There's a lot of grants. We are aggressively going after grants, as you know. A couple to highlight are the generator upgrade at the wastewater treatment plant and the water treatment plant and Pope Street Pump Station. We had a discussion with CalOES and FEMA last week, and they basically are about that project as well as the Pope Street Pump Station relocation project. And it sounded pretty promising. They had a lot of questions for us. We responded with RFI requests that they had, and their consultant went through all the answers we had provided, and they seemed pretty happy with them. We don't have anything official on any of these grants in writing yet, but those two projects look pretty promising right now. So the total's eighteen-point-two million in grant that we're going after, and our local match for that is about two-point, two-point-eight million. So about eighty-two percent coverage. So with that, thank you very much. So with that, thank you very much for the opportunity to tell you what's been going on and open it up to any questions.
Council members, questions?
Derek, I have a question, what would the Riverside Pond relocation entail, or what will that look like when it happens, if it happens?
Sure. So we have four ponds down there now, right adjacent to the bike path.
Right.
And the two ponds in the middle are basically where the new pond's going to be, the footprint's going to go, so it'll basically accommodate that same area, and we'll still have two ponds so we can take one offline and do maintenance on the other if we need to, so it'll be in that location.
And are those two middle ponds, are they deficient in some way presently, or what do they need, why do they need replacing?
The cease and desist order, right, right, yeah, and we've got to line the ponds, basically.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? Councilman Kraus?
I don't know if Derek can answer this question, but certainly Mike should be able to let us know how's things going with finding a new Public Works Director, are we out on that?
I'm working with Gloria to prepare that recruitment bulletin, and it should be out next week.
Great, and then, I would be remiss if I did not let the Public Works Department know that one of the biggest complaints that I still get is the condition of the roads, so whatever we can do to make sure that we stay on top of our road rebuilding and resurfacing efforts, and I realize that there are some decisions that get delayed, some of it is the fault of the council perhaps, but we need to have, in my opinion, a plan going forward, which we have, but then we need to be able to, okay, if this is getting delayed, we need to hop on this other one and delay maybe what was our top priority so that we keep focused and we always have some forward progress on road resurfacing.
With that said, Derek, so we're still maintaining our commitment of approximately 25% of our roads being resurfaced, repaired, or replaced over the course of a year? Each year, I should say?
I think 25% is aggressive, that's what we did with the micro-surfacing.
Okay, sorry.
And so, for the two projects that we previously did, significantly increased our PCI, but that was kind of the easy work, now we're in the reconstruction part, and that's where we have to take into consideration what's the condition of the underground utilities.
Okay, and then, on grant funding, I mean, you guys have done an absolutely, over the last several years and currently, and I don't think most of the public is aware of the absolutely incredible job that you guys as a team have done, and the amount of grant funding that you've gotten for a community of our size is astonishing, and I know you've got 18.2 out there with a match of 2.75, that doesn't include what you've got, what you've received over the last few years, so you guys absolutely, your teams are, should be absolutely commended for that, and that's someone else's money, so it's not ours, and I'd say we're certainly batting well out of our league in terms of the amount of funding we get, so thank you very much for that, very much so. How about an update on the pedestrian bridge at Pioneer Park in Sharpstein?
Sure, so, we recently applied for some grant money through the ERWIM program to cover the removal of the low water crossing, so we heard back some initially good news on that, I mean, it's good news, bad news, right, you get money, but then you're, you've got a lot of strings attached, so it may potentially slow that project down a little bit, but the good part is that it would be completely funded, so we, but right now, as far as where we are with it, ESA is our consultant that's been hired, and they are working on the hydrology and hydraulics, which is basically determining that the bridge, once it gets put in, there's no rise to the flood elevation based on the design elevation, and then they're also working on the permits that we need, they've made application on those permits, so we're kind of waiting and seeing, but the design's done, so once we get the permits, and we already have the bridge, of course.
And then, on the Riverside Pond relocation, we've got a grant pending for 4 million, what's that total project going to cost?
4 million.
So their 4 and our 4?
Yeah, so hazard mitigation program will be 3 million, the grant will be 3/4 of that, and then, and then the other million, we've applied for the ERWIM monies to cover the million, our match, so hopefully, hopefully, we've still got a long ways to go, but...
Anyone, Mike?
So, I just want to compliment Derek, the capital projects under the grant list that you don't see, you know, a split, are 100% grant funded, so the 4 million, 100%. Concrete, 2 million, 100%. Pioneer Bridge, 100%. The ERWIM grant that Derek went after, out of the, so the state, it's Prop 84 money, the state, you know, carves out, the Department of Water Resources carves out the state into regions, so we're like in the North Bay region. On that call for applications, I want to say there were probably 75 or 80 applicants, they funded eight, of which we were one. So when you say we're out of our league, I would say we're in our league because we're so good.
I'm in batting up, there you are.
They just don't know who they're competing with.
I will stand corrected happily on that one, so thank you very much.
You know, I just can't say enough about Derek.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Anyone in the public, any questions, other than when is my road going to be paved? Mr. McNay, if you could, please, stand if you're so able and speak out loud.
I was wondering about the Petrified Forest signalization project, seems likely 128 on the street there also, is Caltrans involved in this, or just going to do it and let them know?
If only it weren't that easy.
Yeah, Caltrans is involved in that project, and part of the funding goes through them too, so they have to review all of our designs, and we had a field review meeting where they actually brought out about five or six people from different departments within Caltrans to look at what we're doing and review our 30% design.
Does Caltrans seem to take a hold of this project?
Yes, mhm.
Their preference, which you have to prove why it won't work now with Caltrans, and if I'm out of bounds, tell me, is their preference is you must explain why you can't install a rotary at such an intersection before they'll let you move on to a traffic signal or something other than that, so that is the new Caltrans model, so, what's that? I know there's no room there for it. Derek, can you remind us, when, had we picked a date for the community forum about the signalization at Petrified Forest Road?
I don't believe we've picked a date yet.
Okay.
Yeah, we're kind of waiting to see, you know, after the field review meeting how that went, and then, so now it'd be, yeah, we can plan that.
And this has been a project in the works for at least two years that I'm aware of?
Correct.
Okay, all right, so look for that to be in there, Dennis, I expect to see you at that meeting when Caltrans is explaining what they're doing and why they're doing it.
I'll be hoping to stop.
Fair enough, anyone else in the public? All right, thank you very much, Derek, well done, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, moving on to the next item, so what happens is Derek and his team fixes a road, makes it smooth, and then people speed on that road, as we well know, so the next up is we have a report by Calistoga Police Department on Traffic Enforcement Activities for Speeding and Noise from Modified Exhaust Systems, taking us through this, I believe, will be Sergeant Tim Martin. Tim, welcome back.
Mr. Mayor, Council.
Am I wrong in saying that potholes are a speed mitigation method? I mean, it kind of slows you down.
A little bit, but you can't have potholes everywhere.
Very true, thanks, Tim.
So I think I have a 30-second time limit, is that correct?
No.
I was just asked to come in and just talk briefly about what the department's doing, I mean, we're trying to do extra enforcement, I looked up some general numbers, just for the last two months, we've made approximately 215 car stops, out of those, we've had 62 citations, one of the things I'd like to say that, just because we make a car stop doesn't mean that everybody needs a citation for every single thing, many times being out there and being in the public, people see us and then they see what they're doing wrong, for example, seat belts, many, many times, we'll sit there and people just look at us, put their seatbelt on, realize that's what they need to do, and they'll go on. So we'll make traffic enforcements for a number of different reasons, and some of those are for mechanical reasons, some of those are for speeding, and we've been getting some complaints on Foothill Boulevard, so we've been out there trying to do some extra enforcement out there, and I can say, as an officer of being here for 24-plus years, I've had many times a sit on Foothill Boulevard, majority of the vehicles are within 35 to 40 miles an hour, and then we do have our speeders, it's not an extreme amount of people, but they're out there, and so we're trying to stop them and catch them. The hard part is, when you're in a big black and white vehicle, they see us, they slow down, when I'm in my own personal vehicle, I see many, many violations that occur while I'm not in my big black and white car, but when we're out there, they see us, they slow down. Right now, we have a couple of Caltrans signs out there on both ends of Foothill Boulevard, saying if you speed, or if you don't slow down, you'll get a ticket, we've increased the speed signs, we have some, we had the radar trailer up for a while, now we have some digital signs getting people to slow down, and it's effective for the most part, I still got to write a couple citations yesterday for speeding in the evenings, so we just recently came into a contract with, or a contract with California Highway Patrol, and they're going to start coming up and start going to come up here on a regular basis during some several set hours, due to specific speed controls or specific traffic enforcement also. The thing about law enforcement for the city police is we have traffic control, we also have other calls that we get called out to, too, California Highway Patrol, they focus specifically on traffic, so they're going to come up and really work our areas that would need assistance, they would do it anyways outside of the county, now they're just going to work their way into the city limits a little bit also, so it'll be starting up next week. Some of the things that we've been working on is, some of the things that's been come to your attention back down to our attention is some of these vehicles that have a lot exhaust, so we've been making an effort to contact those drivers, some of them deserve citations, some of the cars we've contacted, it's, we're letting them know, and getting the word out as far as they're driving and their vehicle exhaust and mechanicals and that sort of thing, so we've been working on that also, so.
Great, on the CHP contract, so that's, we're paying for additional coverage from them, is that how this works, or?
It's basically a staff augmentation concept, so we've asked them to assist us in traffic enforcement during specific times, we'll be focusing on the peak hours, so 6:00 AM to maybe 9:00 AM, and then 4:00 to 7:00, but they'll be solely dedicated to traffic enforcement wherever we tell them to go.
Great. And I know that's, Foothill Boulevard is not your only area of concern when it comes to poor driving, we'll call it, I know you've got several spots around the city that is difficult for two officers at a time to cover on top of the other things you're, the primary things you're here to do, which is our health and safety, so I know it's a difficult concept and everyone, not everyone, many people assume that we could just have an officer on every corner and that'll stop the problem, but that is certainly not the case here, and you guys do a great job, so thank you.
We do have some citizens that'll point out specific cars, vehicle, and we'll get that information, pass it on to our officers, and then they'll be aware of these specific problems, and then when we see them, we can do the enforcement. The hard part is, like you say, being everywhere all the time, we can't follow the same car, you know, 24/7, but when we do see them and it comes across our attention, take care of it from that standpoint, too.
Thank you, other council members, questions?
Yeah, have you actually issued any citations for the modified mufflers?
We've done a couple, yes.
Yeah, and is there, what is the cost of the citation?
That I don't know, and that's whenever I give a citation, I tell them I don't deal with the cost, that's all done with the courts, I'm not there for cost and money, I'm there for a citation, and the rest of it is done through Napa Courts.
Okay.
So, is the emphasis on vehicles that are in town, those cars, or are you guys paying attention also to the motorcycles that are coming usually from out of town on the weekends kind of thing, so has there been emphasis on one or the other, or both?
There's not an emphasis on one, only one or the other, it's whatever's egregious, I think would be the best way to put it.
All right, well, it's not a public hearing, anyone in the audience, any questions?
Yes, sir. So, two things, the tinting on the windows, it is a fix-a-ticket, if we pull them over and then, if should them fix a ticket citation, they can have it removed and then signed off, if they choose to put it back on after they've got it signed off, that's up to them from that standpoint. I do know some people have tinting on the windows for medical reasons due to the light in their eyes and whatnot, so it just, you know, but some of them are pretty extreme on the side windows, on the driver's side, passenger's side. Silverado Trail, again, talking about Highway Patrol and City Police, we have a small section on Silverado Trail that's actually within the city limits, so from, from Brandon Street to just south of the construction is, that one section is ours, north of Brandon Street and then south of Pickett, and that area is all going to be Highway Patrol, so our section is almost right in front of Solage, is within our city limits. I'm just saying, the way it comes across, the way it comes across, we don't have the entire Silverado Trail, we don't have it from Highway 29 all the way down to Dunwoody, that's not all within city limits. Right, no, I'm just talking about, we don't have that whole area, some people think it's all ours, it's not, we have that, we have a small section that's ours.
We've offered to annex all of it, but the county's not interested, yeah, exactly, all right, anyone else? Tim, thank you, thank you to your team, and continue taking care of us, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Jim.
I was going to ask, of the 215 cars pulled over, how many of them were locals misbehaving? You don't have to answer that unless, oh, he's got an answer.
For local citizens who complain about speeders, be careful what you ask for, because I've pulled over a few that are local citizens, so it's, you can't complain about speeders and say, well, it's the other speeders I'm complaining about, not me.
Have they been in here complaining about speeders, the ones that you?
I've pulled in, I've pulled over plenty of local citizens also, and had discussions with them, too.
Just encouraging them to do the right thing.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, well, we'll now move on to the consent calendar, I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar as presented, unless it, any items are requested to be pulled, and I'm asking to pull item number eight, and item number nine, does anyone want anything else pulled? All right, with that said, I'll entertain a motion to move on items five, six, and seven.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, a second by Councilmember Williams, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried, thank you. Moving on to item number eight, resolution awarding a contract to Allard General Engineering Incorporated in the amount of $394,524, including alternate number one, for the flow meter installation project, project number 5533, approving a budget adjustment in the amount of $154,000, and authorizing the city manager to execute the contract, the recommended action on this item was consider adopting the resolution, the reason the item was pulled is at the request of the city manager, who will give us guidance.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember, Mike Kern, city manager, I'm pleased to announce that at 5:55 this afternoon, we were successful in negotiating with Roman Spa the ability to install geothermal meters on their property, so we do not have to tear up the streets, nor do we need to expend $434,000 to do what the CDO tells us we need to do, so I'm recommending that your council reject all bids and direct staff to work with Allard Engineering to install those geothermal meters and possibly reconstruct the sewer line on Second Street, and we would do that under negotiated purchase order, which, under our municipal code, I have the authority to execute the agreement up to $175,000, I do not believe it will be that much, probably be in the 150 range, but we would like to move smartly on that if your council so directs.
Thank you very much, council members, any questions? Anyone in the public, any questions? All right, do we need to take an action on this?
Just through consensus or a motion to authorize staff to move forward on the geothermal meter installation and Second Street sewer installation.
I'll make a motion that we do that, I think that's better than having consensus because it can be issued as a minute order.
Second. A motion by Councilmember Kraus, a second by Vice Mayor Dunsford, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number nine, resolution confirming the mayor's appointment of... Item number nine, resolution confirming the mayor's appointment of Erica Pucey to the Active Transportation Advisory Committee. The recommended action is consider adopting the resolution. The reason I'm pulling this is because any time a citizen steps up to serve their community and their fellow citizens, I want them to be applauded for doing so. Erica's here, thank you very much, keeping us safe and aware of our alternate forms of transportation other than your speeding cars, your biking, your walking, your hiking, et cetera. Erica, thank you for your willingness to do so and keeping us in line, and helping us move along to be a much more friendly city when it comes to that. So with that said, unless there are any council member questions, I'll entertain a motion on that item, which I will make myself.
Second.
All right, we have a second by the Vice Mayor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Did we negotiate your salary for this role?
Thank you, Erica.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to a public hearing. Item number 10, consideration of zoning code amendment ZOA 2019-1 to modify lot coverage and accessory building and structure requirements. The recommended action is to receive public testimony and introduce the ordinance. Taking us through this item will be Zach Toonzinger, Senior Planner and Assistant to the City Manager. Zach, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, City Manager. Happy to be here tonight. We have for you a possible municipal code amendment to Title 17, which is our zoning code. Essentially, this is a cleanup of our accessory structure provisions and a modification to our lot coverage limitations. Both of these things are related. As you're aware, staff attempts to be really responsive when issues do come up in terms of the zoning code or the municipal code. In response to, might call a couple challenging situations that we've seen over the last year or so involving lot coverage, accessory structures, some ambiguities in the code, some conflicting provisions in the code, some areas where we haven't had maybe the flexibility we should. We did take a discussion item to the Planning Commission in March regarding accessory structures and lot coverage. At that time, the Planning Commission directed staff to do a cleanup of the zoning code, particularly as it pertained to accessory structures. And also at the same time, the Planning Commission directed staff to prepare zoning code amendments that would increase the lot coverage in single-family areas of Calistoga. Idea behind this being, we wanted to give homeowners and property owners more flexibility with their properties, more ability to do minor additions if they needed to, to add porches, to add pergolas, outdoor spaces, things that you just want to have when you're living in a place like this with such great weather all the time, except when it's smoky. And really, they were also looking, thinking that Calistoga might try to be a little bit more in line with some of our neighboring communities, Yountville, St. Helena, Healdsburg, in terms of what they require or allow in terms of lot coverage and accessory structures. And then another added benefit was by increasing the lot coverage provisions, we would actually decrease the need for some homeowners to add second stories to their properties, which comparing the intrusiveness, a small addition on the back of someone's home is a lot less intrusive than a big second-story addition going up on the property next door to you. On June 26, at a public hearing with the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission did unanimously recommend some changes to the council, one of which was changing the definition of accessory buildings or structures in the zoning code, primarily in how we determine what's an open or enclosed accessory structure. And then for the R1 and the R110 districts of Calistoga, which colloquially are single-family districts that are in kind of the city core, to change the lot coverage. Currently, lot coverage is restricted at 30%. There's a few exceptions for that, they're fairly complicated. But as a boilerplate for lots under 7,200 square feet, which are the smaller lots in town, 7,200 is the average lot size in the older part of town, bumping that up to 50% lot coverage. For R1 properties that are greater than 7,200 square feet, 40% lot coverage. And for R110 properties, that's R1 properties that are greater than 10,000 square feet, to bump it up to 35% coverage. And the rest of the changes that are recommended pertain primarily to accessory structures, including eliminating some conflicting provisions that are in the code, reformatting it for ease of use both for staff and the public, and clarifying some of the standards. And ultimately, all these serve to give homeowners and residents more flexibility with their property, reasonable flexibility. All normal setbacks, design standards, design review, and all other provisions would remain the same, and nobody's gonna go building giant McMansions on their property because of this. But we do think this is something that would give homeowners just a little bit more flexibility to do what they reasonably would expect to be able to do with their properties. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And you suggested that our very competent and capable Planning Commission has been through this already.
Absolutely. Public hearing, no comments.
Thank you very much. Council members, any questions of staff before I open up to the public? All right, anyone in the public wishing to address this matter? Not seeing any movement, I will close it, and you are looking for us to simply receive public testimony, which we've done, and there isn't any, and we are going to look to introduce the ordinance.
I'll.
Please.
I'll make the motion to introduce the ordinance and waive the first reading. At what point do I read the title?
Right now.
Right now. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Calistoga amending Calistoga Municipal Code Title 17, zoning, to modify lot coverage and accessory structure regulations, and to reformat certain chapters to improve their usability. Parenthesis Z0A 2019, could be said 2019, I suppose, dash one, end parenthesis.
Do we have a second? And you don't have to read the whole thing.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, we have a second by Vice Mayor Dunsford. All those in, do I have to poll this one? Roll call this one, sorry, I knew it. It's the least we can do since Gary did all that work. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kraus?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez Ortega?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dunsford?
Aye.
And Mayor Cannon.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Zach, thank you for continuing to make us a kinder, gentler city to our residents.
My pleasure. Thank you.
All right, with that said, we will be adjourning, and if the council would indulge me, I would like to adjourn this evening's meeting in memory of a fine Calistoga, and a fine crooner, and a man of good spirit who passed away, Lenny Murphy, recently. So keep his family in your thoughts and prayers, and Calistoga will be a little bit less special without Lenny around. So with that said, I'll adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is August 20, 2019, at 2:00 PM. Thank you all, and have a good evening.